All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 5:30 PM. It is Tuesday, March 4th. I'm going to call this specialist city council meeting to order. The city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney? Tobias?
All right, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is executive session. The city council will now go into executive session to discuss items one, A through J pursuant to Texas government code, sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.087. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:08 PM. It is Tuesday, March 4th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Heiser?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Present.
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to consider approving the minutes for city council meeting February 15th, special meeting, and also the special meeting for February 18th as well.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo that we approve the minutes. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have two who've signed up to speak.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is Tracy Scheel, and I come to you as the president of the HOA for Water Leaf Falls and also, and more importantly, as a resident of the city of Kyle. So this past Saturday morning, we had forty-six people show up, including council member Rizzo, council member Zuniga, council member McKinney, to help with the Great River cleanup. It was a success. We had, as I said, forty-six people come, and also, we had the volunteers, and then we also had the Parks Department staff, and they were wonderful. They were very helpful, and we got, apparently, I think it was thirty-two bags of trash, five hundred pounds of trash. And they really dug deep, apparently, to get some of that stuff. I know they pulled out one little tunnel culvert thing that was pretty big, and then I know that, I think, council member Rizzo's daughter actually found an illegal, like, construction dumping area. So, you know, it's still, people still leave trash, unfortunately. But it's not just the people. It's also days like today when it's just slightly on the windy side, you know, and trash cans get dumped over, and then all of that debris also gets, you know, thrown around with the wind. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, Water Leaf Park, I know a lot of people think that it is a, you know, extension of Water Leaf Falls neighborhood. It is not. It is a city park, and it is for the city residents. It's the trailhead for the natural trails, so people can go and connect with nature and not be able to see, you know, debris. So, again, thank you, everybody, and, oh yes, also, another group that came was PAC-125 Cub Scouts, so it was really good to see them. And again, thank you to the city, thank you to the Parks Department, and also a shout out to Kathy Raker. This year would not be possible without all the previous years that she worked diligently and hard for to keep this going. So, again, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Our next up is Zachary Barton.
Hello, everybody. Excuse the casual dress here, just came from helping people pack to potentially evacuate. But, anyway, today, in solidarity with the National Days of Protest, I read some short excerpts from "They Thought They Were Free: The Germans, 1933 to 45," an interview with the German survivor. So each act, each occasion is worse than the last, but only a little worse. You wait for the next, and the next. You wait for one great shocking occasion, thinking that others will join with you in resisting somehow. You don't want to act, or even act alone. You don't want to go out of your way to make trouble. You're not in the habit of doing it. And it's not just fear, fear of standing alone, that restrains you. It is also genuine uncertainty. Uncertainty is a very important factor, and instead of decreasing as time goes on, it grows. Outside in the streets, in the general community, everyone is happy. One hears no protest. Your colleagues, they say it's not so bad, or you're seeing things, or you're an alarmist. And you are an alarmist. You are saying that this must lead to this, and you can't prove it. These are the beginnings, yes, but how do you know for sure, or even surmise, the end? But the one great shocking occasion when tens or hundreds of thousands will join with you never comes. That's the difficulty. If the last and worst act of the whole regime had come immediately after the first and smallest, thousands, yes, millions, would have been sufficiently shocked. But of course, this isn't the way it happens. In between come all the hundreds of little steps, some of them imperceptible, each of them preparing you not to be shocked by the next. Step C is not so much worse than step B, and if you did not make a stand at step B, why should you at step C? And one day, too late, your principles all rush in upon you. Now you live in a world of hate and fear. Now you live in a system which rules without responsibility even to God. Suddenly, it all comes down all at once. You see what you are, what you have done, or more accurately, what you haven't done, for that was all that was required of most of us, that we do nothing. You remember those early morning meetings when, if one had stood, others would have stood, perhaps, but no one stood. A small matter, a matter of hiring this man or that, and you hired this one rather than that. You remember everything now, and your heart breaks. Too late. You are compromised beyond repair. So I want to let you all know that if you have difficult decisions to make over the next few years, y'all are not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the forms that I have. Does anybody else have a citizen comment form?
All right, thank you, and I want to say thank you to that previous presenter. That was a really great, kind of a reminder. So I have two items I want to talk about. Agenda item number five, which I contacted the city manager. I just feel like I was a little concerned regarding the recent agenda item notification for the upcoming council meeting for today. Agenda item five states, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding Example Plan A. I believe this notification may not fully comply with the Texas transparency requirements outlined in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Specifically, the description lacks clarity and context, particularly regarding its connection to our city's redistricting efforts. For the sake of public awareness and engagement, it would be beneficial to specify that this agenda item pertains to redistricting. A more detailed description would enable residents to understand the implications of the discussion and encourage their participation. Mr. Langley was nice enough to write me back, and he let me know that it was in full compliance. My concern is those who just read the agenda items, and without knowing that it's about redistricting, they may just read over that without going into details of the backup information. The other agenda item that I want to discuss is regarding the parks survey that you guys are going to be using for agenda item four. I do have a few issues about that. I emailed each of you guys all the information I'm about to go over right now. My first issue is the survey is still open, despite the website stating it closed on 12/6. Everybody still has access to it, and when I say everybody, I mean anyone can access this survey. Non-residents with no financial interest, and more importantly, in an email that I received in open records, it looks like when Lauren Lyons, the business retention specialist for the city of Kyle, reached out to Dr. Wright, who is the HACIST superintendent, asking him to have the students take this test, or takes a survey, Dr. Wright asked, or he said, "I'm guessing you just want campuses located in Kyle. Thanks." The response to that is, "For the sake of ISD consistency, and since the surveys are open to all who use Kyle parks and recreation, we recommend opening to all students." It is concerning to me that you would take the feedback of people who do not pay taxes in Kyle, or reside in Kyle, especially when it comes to the sports complex. An issue regarding the survey, for those who take it, they can skip all questions except for question 12A. If you're wondering what question 12A is, it is specifically asking about an indoor sportsplex. So I sent you a picture of it being read. The question is, currently, the city of Kyle does not have an indoor recreation facility. Do you feel indoor recreation facilities needed in Kyle? That is required. In order to finish that survey, all other survey questions can be skipped, and I sent out a printout of my finalized survey, which shows that none of them were answered except for that one. So I would encourage you guys to do a more thorough survey with less questionable responses. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who has a citizen comments form? All right, seeing none, citizen comments is now closed. All right, next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any items they wish to move around on the agenda?
Eighteen, sorry, eighteen, if you don't mind.
All right, we're going to, we're going to move agenda item eighteen up. Do you have a particular place you want to put it?
You know what? I think we can get through the consent. Well, I'll go ahead and pass on that for now.
All right. Anyone else? All right, next up is agenda item three, appointments. Consider approval of a resolution to appoint seven members to the Train Depot Board, with Anthony Davis to seat one, Robert Spina to seat three, Patrick Gibson to seat five, and James Herbert to seat seven, each expiring September 30th, 2025, and Morgan Harrell to seat two, James Del Freight to seat four, and Margarita Cosby to seat six, each expiring September 30th, 2026. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The following item, just like it's stated, is really to get some membership to our Train Depot Board. Again, the odd number of seats will expire in, with all the other boards and commissions in September of this year, and the even numbers will expire in 2026. So with that, we're excited to re-engage this board. They haven't met in a while, so I think there's some opportunities, as you can see, kind of from the applicants, is there's people that are currently involved with the Heritage Center and different things throughout the county are really excited about signing up and hopefully being a member of the Train Depot Board. So with that, the review committee did meet on this and had unanimous recommendation on appointing all of these members to the Train Depot Board.
I'm going to let these slides go through. These are good. There's some great applicants, great selections. Does anybody have any comments, questions, motions?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, everyone that was appointed to, considered to be appointed to the Train Depot Board, and just want to say, I've been serving with Patrick Gibson, who, for a while now, in the Historical Commission. He's done a great job, is there almost every Saturday at the Train Depot. And you talk about commitment, this guy has a commitment. So thank you for all that you do for us, Patrick.
Second. All right, there's motion by-
And I second his commentary also about-
Motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem that we approved agenda item three, is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Next up is agenda item four, receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. Mr. Lopez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Kellman. I'm Mr. Lopez, Director of Parks and Recreation. The Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan is going to serve as a guiding document for Parks and Recreation in Kyle for the next ten years. Projects born out of the implementation of this master plan will have impact on the community for even more decades to come. You and City Council charge staff with learning what the public wanted to see for the future of Parks and Recreation for the city of Kyle, what mattered most to them. So we engage the public via online surveys, public input meetings, community engagement meetings, pop-up events, also some focus groups, with the help of STANTEC, our consultant. We also looked at how the city measured up against national standards and metrics. At this time, I'd like to ask Mark Altonato to join the podium to tell us more about that process and the next steps for adopting the master plan that's going to serve Parks Recreation, Open Space, and the city of Kyle.
Appreciate it. Thank you, David. Mayor and councils, good evening. Mark Altonato, Senior Principal with STANTEC, and been leading the planning effort on this really exciting project. It's been a couple months since we provided an update, so it was a great time to provide some feedback on what we heard from the community, what we learned throughout this entire process, and then how some of the preliminary recommendations are starting to shape up. So going through this timeline, you might remember that we talked about the overall process for the proposed plan, the Parks Recreation, Open Space Master Plan. If we were to summarize it over three phases, we're approaching the third phase, which is the plan development recommendations, and then soon, the presentation for consideration of adoption. We anticipate to be concluding our efforts towards the end of April or early May. Now, when we do these comprehensive Parks Recreation Master Plans, we don't only look at one lens, or we don't only get one piece of information and make all decisions based on that. We have a comprehensive approach based on various assessments methodologies. We really look through five different lenses. You know, we look at demand-based assessment, resource-based assessment, access-based assessment, equity-based, and then standard-based. So to go into each one of these a little bit in more detail, we'll start with the standard-based assessments. When we talk about standard-based, is where we're looking at peer cities, we're looking at National Recreation and Parks Society standards, we're looking at Trust for Public Land standards, and other peer agencies that are kind of the beacon in the Parks and Recreation space. So we look at their standards, their benchmarks, and we compare the city of Kyle in regards to their parks and recreation facilities, inventory, and assets, to see how they compare in that one lens. One of the first things that we do is we look at all the different park classifications. As you guys can imagine, a small little pocket park has a different role, a different contribution than a 500-acre regional sports park, right? So we look at those different classifications, and we make sure that we classify all the existing parkland in the right category. And these are some examples of some of those classifications. One of the other things that we do is we look at all the different facility types, and we look at NRP standards, we look at peer agencies and peer municipalities of similar sizes, and see how do they compare against what the city of Kyle owns and facilitates as part of their inventory. One of the things that we learned was that the city of Kyle is behind in a lot of aspects in terms of facilities, inventory, through this one lens alone, there's a lot of gaps in where we should be in regards to facility types or assets. You know, for example, let's look at, like, diamond fields. You know, approximately, the city of Kyle is short about seven diamond fields compared to NRP standards alone. The numbers in green are areas where we actually exceed compared to national standards, which are very few, as you can tell. Expanding on the standard-based assessments, we also look at parkland acreage based on thousand residents, we look at the Parks and Recreation Department operational budget analysis, and then we also look at staff. As you can tell, again, from the summary down below, we see that those numbers fall short in comparison through this one lens. When we identify peer cities, who do we compare ourselves on a daily basis? Who is next to us? You know, when we talk about competitive advantage, or, you know, how do we stand out to our neighbors, this is a good matrix that summarizes that in regards to Parks and Recreation facility types and needs here. But here's our neighboring cities, and where the city of Kyle compares in regards to existing parkland acreage, number of full-time employees, and then budget. Still, along the standard-based assessment, we look at spatial level of service. As I mentioned, each park classification type has a different service area. You know, the smaller the park, the smaller the service area. For example, you know, a small pocket park might have only about a quarter-mile service area versus a regional park that might have a five-mile service area. But this is a really good analysis that shows us spatially, and just looking spatially, how are the service areas stacking up? And are there areas of needs throughout the city's jurisdiction boundaries that are lacking service in reverse parks? Now, moving on to equity-based assessments, we also look at various data to look at from the aspect of just equity. You know, when we look at environmental vulnerability factors, we looked at air quality, we looked at flood zone, moist pollution, hazardous waste proximity, heat island effects, and whatnot. What you start seeing here is just based on this lens, the areas in brown are areas of high vulnerability, areas in green become low priorities. This is one of the lenses that we looked at in regards to equity. Second one was socioeconomic, looking at income households, looking at unemployment rate, looking at homeownership crime rate, and whatnot. Again, areas in red, high, areas in yellow, low.
Thank you. Community health, looking at different diseases, looking at medical conditions, looking at disorders, same analysis through this. And then accessibility, access to parks, either existing parks, park types, or park amenities, ideally within a ten-minute walk, more or less, or within a quarter-to-half-mile walk, ideally. Now, another lens that we looked at is the resource-based assessment. When we look at resource-based assessment, we're looking at natural features, we're looking at man-made features. For example, we're looking at greenways, floodplains, easement corridors. We're also looking at highway systems. Is there anything that's really creating a barrier, or a burden of connectivity in some way? Or are there areas that aren't being capitalized to improve connectivity? And we're looking at those resource assets to see if there's areas for improvement and areas that we can improve on. And then lastly, the fifth lens that we look at is the demand-based assessment. This is specifically to the community. This is all the outreach and engagement that we did, not only with stakeholders, but the community, and I'm proud to say we had a great response when we engaged the community and stakeholders through various platforms, from social media, to workshops, to pop-up events, to City Fest, and a lot of other events, moving in the park, and a lot of other events that we hosted, we were able to get over 4,000 points of feedback of various exercises, visual preference exercises, one-word visioning exercises, top needs. But then beyond that, we were able to receive over 1,100 survey responses from that one platform alone. You know, having the survey in English and Spanish, having it in paper formats versus digital formats, were all part of the contribution to having a great success right here. So when we look at the survey questions and the engagement aspect of demand-based assessment, here are some high-level takeaways that we learned from the response that the community gave in regards to their vision of the Parks and Recreation spaces for the city of Kyle. Now, what we heard, top amenities needed, again, wasn't necessarily a surprise, but aquatic center, you know, natural habitat was important, trails, playground, courts, fields, you know, and then in regards to priorities, trails were the number-one response, followed by playgrounds, sport courts, soccer fields, and then aquatic, in that order. In terms of indoor facilities, the top amenities needed, this was the response. Overall, seventy-six percent of the survey responders identified a need for indoor recreation. Of that, we do have also seventy-six percent responding in this favor, under the age of twenty-five, and then seventy percent were in favor of an indoor sports facility or recreation center over the age of twenty-five. Over the age of forty was seventy percent. the age of 40 was 70%, as well. We hosted a trails workshop. We knew that trails was a very top priority for the residents of Kyle, so we hosted a trail symposium workshop where we invited students, stakeholders, community residents, business owners, to really identify, how can the trail system be improved, and what are their top priorities? What we learned were that there's a lot of missing connections that would really help elevate the trails system to make the trails system a multimodal network, where they can ride their bike and not get in a car to get from point A to point B. Right now, there are fragments missing where it's preventing a lot of users from really accomplishing that. There was also the need for a lot of just like furnished and finished trails, you know, with lighting, trees, trailheads, shades, et cetera. Also, the lack of marketability, I call it, or transparency in regards to where does this trail take you? Where can I park? You know, how can I use the trail system to get from point A to point B on a more regional scale? But yes, as I previously mentioned, about 80% of all respondents marked trails as a top priority. Regards to budget, not a surprise, but the number-one response here was to upgrade existing equipment in existing facilities at existing parks over developing brand-new parks or acquiring additional parkland. Heard about maintenance and appearance, and a lot of room for improvement in various aspects here. And then summarizing the demand-based assessment, you know, the most desired amenities, aquatic, indoor recreation, trails, preservation areas, splash pads, whatnot, but really investing in the current parks, elevating them in terms of maintenance, replacing equipment, making them more safe, more diverse in terms of programming, versus acquiring new parkland in new parks. Now, what happens is when we look at each one of those lenses, again, we don't just say, this is one piece of information that's going to dictate everything. We stack all of those different assessments, and we determine what are those key themes that really surface to the top that are repetitive? What are those priority areas that stick out as this is the area of need, and this is where we can really move the needle? But also, what does a community want specifically that can help us bridge those gaps in regards of gap analysis or needs assessment? So, all of that data, all of that research and due diligence is then the framework that develops the final master plan, which is in progress right now. So, taking the needs assessment and the community engagement, we then develop the vision and the mission statement, which then transform into the goals that are going to be established out of this Parks Master Plan, objectives, and then implementation plan. So, the Parks and Recreation vision states to envision a thriving network of parks and recreation where nature, inclusion, and community come together to enhance quality of life in Kyle. The mission statement is to be a premier and sustainable parks and recreation system that builds community and promotes health, conservation, and inclusivity for all. Now, we've established five major goals out of this plan that we really want to promote as not only this is going to help us bridge the gap in terms of needs and help catch up to where we need to be, but it's really to put the city of Kyle on the platform of a premier destination of an exclusive and A-plus park and recreation system that will serve the community, that have that multiple benefits in regards of accessibility, health, economic development, and prosperity. So, out of these goals here, I'll go into them in high level, but what you're going to see in the draft of the master plan over the next couple months or so, you're going to see that you have your goal, which in this case is a dynamic and inclusive community, you're going to have a series of objectives. So, what do we want to accomplish through that goal, and how are we doing that? By reaching those objectives, and then the strategies, which are going to be your day-to-day action items to really help you achieve these things. So, when we talk about dynamic and inclusive community, we're really talking about enhancing play, recreation, and access opportunities for all, no matter of your age, demographics, abilities, or whatnot. We want to promote the physical and mental well-being through active recreation, create safe, welcoming, high-quality public spaces, you know, and then also support emotional well-being through community engagement and engaging the community in the decisions, but also as part of the Parks and Recreation system. When we talk about a balanced and connected system, we want to make sure that we think of it as a Parks and Recreation system, not just different fragments, where we're establishing seamless multimodal network of parks, trails, and public spaces, that we create a balanced and distributed Parks and Recreation spaces and system that really caters to the entire community, no matter where you live. Enhance the access and mobility for all residents, and foster social connectivity and community engagement, you know, for accomplishing that balanced and connected system. You start seeing some of the recommendations come together. You know, we talked about all these different components, but what does it really look like when you start assembling this, and when you start really achieving some of these goals? You know, so this is a draft of a potential site plan here for Limeburger Park, where we've incorporated a lot of the elements that the community gave us feedback on, but also in that, in those different assessments, the areas of need, you know, where can we really start connecting some of those dots and getting that ripple effect on achieving some of the wins that we identified early on? Seaton Park, another concept here. But then also, you know, bringing some of these concepts to life, what do we mean by this? You know, what is the experience? What are we trying to accomplish here? And how can we really envision a lot of these spaces coming together? Now, keep in mind, this is, these are just preliminary ideas, and they're recommendations. You know, ultimately, we do want, once we're ready to do these improvements, go back out to the community, validate the needs, the desires, and wants, and, you know, identify budgets and whatnot to really start catering to the gap analysis. But right now, we provided some ideas of what these potential recommendations could look like, using some of the examples that we provided here today. Plum Creek Preserve, connecting people to nature, making sure that like we identify those conservation, preservation areas, that not everything has to be mowed, but this is how some of those components start coming to life and start integrating to elevate the overall Parks and Recreation system. Another goal, flourishing nature experience, you know, conserving natural ecosystems, integrating them with park and public spaces, promoting environmental education and awareness, supporting native biodiversity, ecosystem health, and then building resiliency through the ecosystem through climate adaptive strategies. And then lastly, we, I'm sorry, second to last, vibrant and prosperous destinations. We want to create these signature parks and recreation areas that attract visitors and local. We want to be a premier destination, we want to foster economic development through Parks and Recreation investments, we want to develop year-round programming and maintain visitor engagement, but more importantly, we want to promote Kyle's Parks and Recreation System as a regional destination. And then lastly, the sustainable resources. So, when we talk about sustainable resources, we're not only talking about the traditional sustainable terms in terms of green infrastructure or resiliency, we're talking about as the system expands, as the parks facility inventory expands, parkland expands, sustainable resources have to expand to keep up with that system, with that level of service and delivery. You know, so we want to enhance operational efficiency through sustainable practices, secure long-term financial sustainability and funding, but also promote staff development, sustainable workforce practices that can be growing with the education, with the park system, as it becomes a little bit more complex. And then lastly, we're not all about pretty ideas and recommendations, you know, we really do focus on implementation. So, one thing that you have to look forward to when you see the draft of the master plan is going to be an implementation chapter that really defines the roadmap of how do we accomplish these ideas and really transform the plan from a vision into reality. So, what we've done is we identified those community engagement themes based on community feedback, we provided the goals, the objectives, the action steps, responsible parties, identified probable cost, and then the timeline associated with that. We're currently working on this aspect of the master plan, and look forward to presenting the next steps soon. David, do you want to take it away with the next steps, I guess?
Thank you, Mark. Realize that was a lot to process, but next steps are going to include us going back to the public, closing that feedback loop, giving maybe a summary of our findings, opportunity for more engagement, and then drafting the quasi-final version of the master plan, distributing it out to city leadership, to you all, to provide any feedback and recommendations. This is going to be something that will be used to inform our C I P, at least strategically, looking at potential funding strategies, and so it's timely with where we're at in budget season and preparation. But at this time, we'll take any additional feedback or questions that you all have.
Anybody have any commentary that they want to provide to the presenter?
I think that's very spot-on. I mean, it's clear you're taking a comprehensive approach, so I'm very thankful for that, and I'm looking forward to that draft coming where we can really start to see some of the nuances of what you're talking about, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Harrison.
I just want to assure that as we move forward in our planning, that we're integrating with the resources of our neighboring communities, such as the Emerald Crown and Violet Crown Trails, the use of land around the Blanco River, and any other areas that we can coordinate with.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We expect to include some of that in our implementation recommendation.
Councilor Heiser.
Yeah, this question's for Mark. Mark, I saw you out in person at a lot of the community events with your team. What are some of your biggest takeaways from, you know, one-to-one conversations that you had that can't really be measured in some of these data points?
A lot of passion and excitement from the community. People want to use parks, they're passionate about what they have here, and they're very appreciative, but there's area for improvement. And that was conveyed, you know, it can be, you know, the tricky thing about these plans, while they might be very visionary and maybe, you know, 10-year in the making, we also have to address the needs of today. You know, the people that said, hey, this playground needs to be updated because it's not safe right now, or it would be great to have more shade right now, or we could really improve programming for three- to five-year-olds after school. You know, so that's one thing that we, as you look at the plan, we've identified some really low-hanging fruit that needs to be done now to address some of those needs, but we've also really, we presented some pretty bold and visionary ideas that could help take y'all to the next level. Because we did ask both of those questions. We asked some of the immediate need questions, and what are your immediate concerns right now, but also, if you had one wish, and that wish was in the next 20 years of where the park system could be, what would that be? You know, so finding that good balance between the low-hanging fruit, immediate needs, to more of the visionary, was part of the discovery process in a lot of those dialogues. But overall, I think the feedback was great. I mean, we tried to really instill that, you know, it's been a catch-up game for many past years, but times are changing, investments are coming, and we want the community to be part of those dialogues and investments, and that's going to be demonstrated in the plan as well.
Can I just follow up with that one? With all that feedback, what would you say that, what would your takeaway be in terms of what the residents would like the identity of our park system to be 10 years from now? Like trails, sports, you know, that's kind of the themes.
Athletic facilities, athletic facilities, indoor recreation, trails, aquatics, and ballfields, those were all the top five, and no matter which demographic you really asked. I think overall, to summarize, they envision a multi-generational, intergenerational, connected system that is not centered in one area of town, or catering to one demographic, or having one priority over the other. It's a well-distributed, well-designed park and recreation system that caters to the community as a whole.
Councilor Zuniga.
Thank you, Mark. And so, yeah, the presentation was really, you know, really very thorough. I do like how you looked at social vulnerability, environmental vulnerability, park access. You know, it's concerning to see the red areas in all parts of our city. We definitely want to work on that. I do enjoy how you speak of this as a system. So, we want to build that connectivity, and didn't surprise me that trails was up on top. But then what jumps at me also is how, you know, we're at a budget of $4 million that we should be spending more per acreage. We're at 50 percentage of, you know, staff for these parks, those are big numbers. So, we also have to, like you said, address the needs that we have now and have this big vision that, you know, could, should work in Kyle. But then we have like, you know, areas that don't have water available for these parks. So, in order to sustain and have what we're looking for, you know, we have to be, I guess, investing, and that's one of the things that you brought up, is folks do want to see their older parks invested in. That's something that we're starting to do, and I can see that in the master plan, some of the projects coming. So, I'm glad that you touched on that, but, you know, we have to keep in mind that in order to have these fields, as you said, that are great for everyone to use, we have to be able to keep them up to a high standard, and that means shade, irrigation, indoor, you know, cooling centers at a lot of these parks, because it doesn't do us a lot of good to just have great magnificent parks, but throughout the summer, very hard for anyone to go out there and use them, right? So, those are just some of the things that I was thinking about when you were presenting this. I also want to touch back on the number of respondents of the survey. Do you think that that's a good enough sample number? Because it was 1,700 respondents for city, so it seemed low, seemed like it could be skewed. You got 70% that said this is what they wanted, but is that 70%, you know, representative still? I think that we need still more feedback, more data to really process that. And I tried to take the survey, and I even got survey fatigue, you know, 35 questions, and you can't skip them, or, you know, so I can imagine someone else who had maybe less time, you know, and I had all the time in the world to sit around. I did it because it was a slow day for me. But, you know, I'd like to see more respondents give us their feedback, so that it's a true representative, you know, of what we need, but I think all the high points have been touched on. Do you want to speak to the survey?
Yeah, so great point. And I have, this is a touchy subject with professionals, because it depends on who you talk to and their perspective. You know, I think survey numbers can always improve. I mean, I would love to get, you know, 50%, you know, and it's kind of unheard of in our field, but also, it depends who you ask. If you run a statistically validated survey, the magic number is 370, I believe, that if you get that number of respondents following this statistically validated survey methodology, it can be replicated, expanded, and it would be the same. Our methodology is not only relying on the survey, but doing a lot more of the community engagement and outreach, where we do the pop-ups, where we do the town halls, where we do the workshops, and do a lot of those exercises, because you're right, there is a thing such as survey fatigue. So, I'd rather get two responses, or put a sticker on what you like versus not like, or hey, if, give me five words that you describe the future of this park system, I'd rather get some kind of information as opposed to none. So, what we try to do is match the best of both worlds, go out to the community, and go out to where they're at, also invite them into us to have those deep dialogue conversations, but also do the online platforms, paper platforms of engaging in the survey and getting some feedback. So, I agree with you, it could always improve. I was proud that we got that much respondents, you know, it's a good starting point, but one of the things that you're going to see in the master plan recommendations across a number of goals is keep going out to the community, keep engaging them, keep them part of the process, so that when we are developing parks, when we're asking about budgets, when we're asking about priorities, we're making data-driven decisions, and we're tying it back to the community in regards to their desires and priorities as well.
Councilor Rizzi.
Thank you. Great presentation. Did want to ask, one of the questions I always get, I was wondering if you've got this question, is that there's nothing for our kids to do. There's nothing for them to go, nowhere to be. Did you get that question when you were doing your surveys, the pop-ups? Did y'all get that question much?
We did, we did, and we also heard, I didn't know about that, or I've never heard of that. So, I think that's where sometimes, you know, for us that are very zoomed out, looking inward, we're able to say, okay, well, we need to improve like transparency in the sense of, is it transparent that what is the Parks and Recreation System of Kyle? Like if you, can somebody who's new to town go in and say, I like to fish? Okay, well, here are these options. You should explore these parks because they have similarities, you know, things of that sort, you know, going back to the trails workshop, specifically, people said, I don't know where this takes me, and there's nothing that really dictates me or informs me of that. So, yes, we heard that a lot, you know, throughout the various events that we did. Part of that was informing them of what exists, but also, you know, noting that as areas of improvement.
That's good, because that's one of the questions that I'm always asking on the community is, you know, there's nothing for our kids, there's nothing- you know, there's nothing for our kids, there's nothing, Kyle hasn't done a great job of bringing things for our children to do. So that's something that, the question I'm always asked, so I want to see if you got that question as well. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the number, I really like the number, 1,700. That's really good for surveying Kyle. It's hard to get people to do surveys, it's hard to get that community engagement. I wish more people were passionate like you. I'd love to have all the residents do the survey, it would be great. Unfortunately, we don't, but this was one of our successful surveys. When I looked at the numbers, I got really excited because I was thinking about 400 or 500 people were going to take this survey. See 1,700, that was pretty amazing. I'm, I'm really excited, so great job to you and your team. If we can continue to get more community feedback, that's amazing. And that's something that I, I definitely want to hear is about the community impact, because ultimately, that's who's going to decide on what we're doing. So if we, we could continue to get that community impact. Look, there's a lot of residents that don't know. I'm still getting a lot of questions when I'm out in public places, people asking about, you know, Buda now building an indoor facility, sports facility, and I'm like, yeah, I know, you know, and, you know, kind of felt like, okay, they beat us. So it happens. But it wasn't a race, it's because they heard the need from their community. Their community came out and said, you know what? This is what we need for our children. And investing in our children, our adults, everybody, multi-generational is what we're looking for when we're looking at our parks, we're looking at our open spaces, our trails. So that's important to get, that you got that feedback from different people, not just children, but adults, parents, and even elderly. So making sure everybody was heard is important in that conversation. But I, I think this was a great survey, I think it's a great presentation, and I look forward to getting more community impact. And I, I totally agree with you, David. Community input's going to be important, making sure everybody knows, putting the information out, everybody knows what we're doing, how it's coming, being transparent, and making sure everybody has a, has an opportunity to engage us and give us their feedback will be important moving forward, okay? Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Councilor Tobias.
Just real quick. Do you think a lot of it was the, the drawback, Mr., Dr. Zuniga, was the amount of questions on the survey? Was it that they were not specific, or was it? Because I know when I go to the doctor's office, I've got to fill the iPad, and I've got to answer 30 questions, and that takes me just 30 minutes, just in my appointment, right? So I wonder if it's a matter of narrowing down the specific questions? And I know there's questions about reaching out to the, the area, children in the area, like students and so forth. Did you get a lot of good, positive feedback from some of the teenagers and things like that? Or was it just, you didn't have that specific area? You had, what kind of feedback did you get related to park recommendations that you saw that would, would address that age group of teenagers, kids, and so forth?
Right. So to answer your first question, yes, the, the survey was robust, partly because it had been a number of years since a previous survey of this caliber had been done. So it was playing catch-up, and, and as we're developing a overall master plan, we were asking questions about existing inventory usage, recreation, programming, and, and future amenities. So, so we tried to keep it, keep it to a limit, but nonetheless, it probably still took about 20 minutes to complete the survey. But nonetheless, we got some really good information out of that. To answer your questions, approximately one-third of the survey responses alone, and let me just reiterate, we had over 4,000 data point and personal touch base elements. So all the pop-up information, the stuff that was not surveyed, we had about 4,000 data points that we collected through conversations, through exercises, through, through budget exercises, through Trails workshops, things of that sort, that were more than just a survey. So 4,000 data points on that, that part, the survey alone, out of, out of that approximately 1,700 number, about one-third of the respondents were under the age of 25. Two-thirds were, were the rest. Also, we got a good representation from the entire, I mean, geography of Kyle. So the most, we, we got 377 responses from Area D, which was outlined as the downtown southeast Kyle quadrant, and spilling over east of 35. Second was the northwest quadrant of Kyle, northwest of 35, about 195 responses there. These are just survey responses. Third was the northeast quadrant, northeast of 35, with about 160 responses. Lastly was the southwest quadrant with 125, and then 152 responses that were outside of those, those quadrants, either in the ETJ or outside of city limits. So overall, I think, I think the responses were pretty well-representative, not only of one specific age group or demographic or geography, but across a great, you know, segmentation of different cohorts.
Well, good. That's good to see, see the number and the data, whether you're, the way I look at it, whether you're here, you're taxpayer, whatever, if you're interested in coming to Kyle, because there's places in other cities that, you know, it's hard to get into some of these parks, if they're interested in our area, by all means, come on down.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number five. Receive a report, hold a discussion, provide staff direction regarding example Plan A provided by Bigger Staff Heath Delgado Acosta LLP, Ms. Alcorn Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amy Alcorn Reed, City Attorney, for the record. Today, we're revisiting Example Plan A, which we looked at in November. Staff did some looking into the growth in the area. We've determined that the growth is pretty uniform across the city. Mr. Caputo is going to talk about that a little bit more. And today, really, what we're looking for is direction on how to proceed, whether we want to come back and do some sort of drawing session where council can live move lines on the screens, or if we want to do some sort of public input first. With that, I'm going to introduce Kabi Caputo with Bigger Staff.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, City Manager, thanks for having me back. As the City Attorney mentioned, we were given a bunch of utility data from the city staff, and then using, you know, estimates of population per connection, we could get some sort of generalized prediction of your current, or estimate really, of your current population based on that. And of course, it's just a snapshot, and it's an estimate, and, but it shows substantial growth. But as City Attorney said, it's generally all over the city. Maybe District 2 is growing a little bit slower than, than 4 and 6, but it's not significantly much. And so, you know, at this point, we need to figure out the next steps in the process for going forward with redistricting. Generally, we do have the base Plan A, which I can pull up. And, you know, we can work from that as a, as a baseline and have the, the community, you know, provide input. If you want to do community hearings, I know where I used to work with Ms. Alcorn Reed. We had a lot of community meetings, one in every district. I will say, most of them were not very well attended. Some of them were very highly attended, it's just unpredictable. I've had other clients that they just completely did it at the council level. They didn't have any specific, other than in a council meeting, where staff, where public, of course, can come and present and comment. So it's really up to y'all, the, the process you want to follow, what is the correct Kyle way to approach this? And that's where y'all really come in. So I'm available for questions or thoughts or input?
Councilor Tobias.
And you look in District 6 right there, where Daisy Lane, there's that white box area there. There's no, is that a representation as well, or is that something different? Because I see it's all yellow outlined, I'm just curious to know.
I see if the laser works.
I believe you're talking about that little ETJ hole.
Yes.
That's right there. So it's not currently in the city, so it's not considered.
Yeah, anywhere there's a hole like that, that's what we, we would call a window pane, if it's completely surrounded by the city, but is not in the city, it's still in the ETJ.
Okay.
Councilor Zuniga.
The benchmark district overlay, I, I kind of wish you would have had two colors, because I can't really see whether the old and the new merge.
Right.
So are you trying to show, see, I can't see District 6, like whether that small piece used to be a D6, and then in D2.
Oh, shoot. Sorry.
There's a corner piece that looks like it now went into D6.
There you go. Yeah, I wish I could use the pointer or point on the screen, but basically, District 6 gave up territory on the east side, I mean, the west side of the railroad tracks. That's that little red box there. And then it moved south into District 2 and picked up population there. That's where the yellow is kind of on the other side of the red line. But yeah, we can certainly play with the, the way the data is presented, or the information is presented.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just, oh, sorry, I was having a hard, hard time seeing. I knew those were the pieces that moved. Did you move anything in 4? D4 just got basically back its piece?
4, yeah, 4 inherited, as it were, the, the area west of the railroad tracks that had been in, in 6. And then the boundary between 2 and 4 stayed the same. And that's where, you know, if we wanted to, we have to keep the data to where it works under the census, but if we want to use the, the numbers we have showing, you know, the growth, you could theoretically move that line north, the, the part of 2 that's on the west side. Or you could do what we call a push and have 2 give back territory to 6, and then 6 pick up territory again on the west side. You know, there's, there's a, ultimately, there's an infinite number of ways to go about it. But those are kind of two, two ways that immediately, when you look at the map, you think, oh, well, we could do that pretty easily. But yeah, I mean, once we get to drawing, as, as the City Attorney said, we have the system set up, y'all can literally just kind of point, and we'll move the lines, the data automatically recolates. And so you can see in real time exactly what you've done by moving a boundary here or there. And it's, it's, it's a really nice process, and it really speeds up the, the community's ability to see what's going on and your ability to not have to wait a month between, move these lines, and then I come back and tell you what we did.
I think, as he mentioned, there's an infinite number of ways to do this. The way we've tried to approach it, working with Bigger Staff, is the fewest changes possible. So most of the districts remain mostly intact with these few changes that, that we've tried to outline. And I think if you look at where the red line is versus some of the shaded colors, you can see the differences. They're somewhat minimal in context of all the districts, but as we talked about, there's a number of other ways you could approach it. If you're interested in doing that, we can have those sessions. But this, for the most part, keeps the district somewhat intact with the growth, but then equals those out. And I think there is a chart actually in the presentation that shows the population distribution that would be the ideal size compared to these redrawn districts. So that's on one of the slides, I believe he has it up now. Hopefully, that helps as you think about the options of how to proceed.
So overall, the district that shrunk is D2 geographically, right?
Yeah, yes. And it may be, as I said, that maybe we, we were sort of overpopulating 4, thinking that maybe it hadn't grown as fast, but it turns out it's grown just as fast as everybody else, maybe a little bit more than 2. So it may be better to move that line back. And we're within, within the deviation there, we have some ability to do that. We could move, you know, some population both ways and make that work. But yeah, the, the goal was to try to keep the boundaries generally the same so the voters don't get confused, you know, every 10 years about where they're supposed to vote, but.
Just as a reminder, Council, the reason we came back with this was the last time we were here in November, we were asked to look at the growth data and to look into potentially creating a plan where the districts that are growing faster are kind of undersized in the total plan, and the districts that are growing slower are kind of oversized, that in theory, when we come back in 2030, we'll still be pretty close to on track. It says what we're trying to do.
Okay. Additional comments?
I like the minimally invasive part of it, so. The general approach.
Does anybody have any additional feedback? You need something from us other than just moving forward? Because like you said, if you're giving us infinite, we don't, we're not going to easily be able to pick something out of infinite.
So my suggestion, typically councils have, you know, some strong opinions about where a line should go between neighborhoods and that sort of thing, that Mr. Caputo is not going to know when he's drawing these.
Yeah.
And so typically, the next step is we, we set a meeting, we bring it up, and we put it up on the board, and you guys can say, hey, I think it'd be better if we move that line closer to Steeplechase, or that line up north in Center Street, and we can just kind of, can show you what will happen. And then at the end of that, maybe have a plan we can bring back to adopt.
Well, if you, if you're trying to schedule a special meeting for the 29th to discuss water, this would be another good workshop-type item to add to it. I'm not trying to, I don't know if the 29th works or not, because we just got that email. But that would be a, a way, if that's what council wants to do, and have those conversations. I have some minor comments I might would make.
One of the things I would ask is that we get clearer maps, where we can really see the lines, where we can really see where the neighborhoods are, where it's cut off. That would be helpful. I mean, because these, these maps aren't real clear, so we get something a little bit more clear would be great.
I've seen him do it, he can zoom in as he's looking at areas and show you pretty close to where those lines are.
But we can send you much larger maps if you want to look at them at home before we get to the meeting.
That would be great, because honestly, when I first looked at these lines, it looked like I, I was just drawn out of the city again. I was like, boy, that would have been the second time, that'd been great.
On this size, I tend to pull up Google Maps on one screen and this on the other, and then I can kind of figure it out. But we can give you maps that are big enough that you can see every street.
That, that would be great, that'd be helpful, so that we, you know, as a council, we can definitely make a clear decision.
Yeah, I'll talk.
Does anybody have any objections to, to looking at this maybe more in detail at the next time we have a workshop item? Which I know that City Manager, I don't, you know, he's trying to schedule one, I'm not sure when it will end up being. But as far as I know, there's only one item planned for that meeting. This could be a, a good supplement to that. Probably wouldn't take too long to discuss.
It needs to be discussed. If we need to talk about it, it was brought up, so yeah, we could just dissect it a little bit more.
Yep. Okay. We'll be glad to look at, see if we can schedule that and bring it back. And then, following that discussion, then we would potentially have some kind of public hearing and an action item for you to consider.
All right.
And for the public hearings, we generally do have the larger maps as well. So the public, kind of like you, they were just doing with the Parks Master Plan, where the public can come up and look and really see what, what has been done and provide better commentary that way.
All right.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. Does anybody have any items on consent they wish to pull, or questions about items? You want to pull them, or do you just want to ask them?
I'll make them quick.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 14.
All right, motion by Councilmember Rizzo, second by Mayor Proten, that we approve Agenda Items 6 through 12 and 14. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries 7 to 0. Next up, Agenda Item 13, Consider Approval of a Resolution to Award RFQ 2024 DDO4 and Authorize City Manager to Negotiate a Contract with the Goodman Corporation to Develop a Transportation Master Plan for the City of Kyle. Councilor Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Rosie, I'll go ahead and let you go through it.
Rosie Trulow, Director of Administrative Services. So we're here tonight to award the RFQ for the Transportation Master Plan to the Goodman Corporation. The city is hiring an expert to help us develop a Transportation Master Plan as part of our long-term growth strategy. This plan will focus on improving our transportation for cars, bikes, and pedestrians by setting both short-term and long-term goals, serving as a guide for making future decisions about roads, sidewalks, and other transportation needs in the city. Our goal will be to create a safe, inefficient, and well-connected transportation system for everyone. Part of the deliverables associated with the, the contract will be a project management and data collection, developing, excuse me, developing a management strategy, reports, schedules, and collecting key data on population, employment, traffic, and transportation needs, reviewing and analyzing existing plans, assessing past and current transportation plans to refine the city's thoroughfare strategy, development of the transportation plan and model, creating a plan aligned with Campo's regional model and the city's land use policies, completing streets.
Hang on, Rosie, how many, how many slides are this to go through?
Eight.
All right, did you have a specific question?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, you want to shoot for that question?
Well, I figured, let's let the public see the.
Well, we, we had this presentation too.
Yeah, but you pulled off consent, you got the floor, ask a question, let's go.
I got you, I got you. Well, let's slow down, Mayor. We got to take our time and be patient. So Rosie, when was the last time we did a master plan? Was it 2021?
It was Amber Smythe, Assistant City Manager. We last performed that in 2018, and it's been updated and amended since then.
Okay, so those were updates, not, not brand-new master plans?
Right, right, not a brand-new.
Okay. So then, when we issued this, do we have an idea of, like, the cost for this service? Because we issued an RFP, but was there a bid? Do we have an idea of the bid amount?
So this was a request for qualifications. So because we're hiring an engineer, we don't select based on price. We select based on demonstrated competence and qualifications. So after we award the RFQ to the Goodman Corporation, then we will enter into contract price negotiations with them.
And then that contract would then come back to you, and you would, the council would consider whether or not to award the contract. But the qualifications, this is the firm that we recommend is the most qualified to do the work.
Yes, yeah, so that, that was the part that, the negotiate the contract? Like, I was kind of nervous about how do we negotiate something if we don't know what kind of budget amount this kind of service could cost us? So do we base it off of our last one? So do we base it off of our last one?
No, it, it'll be based on the scope of work and the standard and customary rates for that work. As, as Rosie mentioned, in state law, we're not allowed to evaluate, uh, professional engineers based on price. That's a specific prohibition against that. So we'll have to bring back what is the scope of work that we're asking for and their fees for those at the customary rates. What do we think that cost is going to be? And then you'll be able to decide with the funds that we have, it, do you want all of those services or some of those services? Or how would we afford the services that are being offered? But that would come back in the next step.
And as we bring that back.
You don't bring those together at the same time for just the RFQ. You don't have all of the costs because then it would lead to you trying to make a decision based on costs. And it's trying to like pick a, an attorney or an engineer based on the cheapest attorney or the cheapest engineer. That's not the way that works in the professional services statutes.
But when we do bring the contract back, you will have a fully scoped out and priced out, um, agreement to consider as part of the backup.
So we'll be able to decide, like you said, on the options of the services that we need?
Right.
Okay, so my, my, my thing was just I, I wasn't sure, we could be stuck with the high number and we have to negotiate something.
No, and, and you could certainly, if we're not able to reach an agreement on a, on a contract, you can go then to the second rate, rated firm in the RFQ.
Okay, okay, that, that, those are my questions.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a ma, a motion to approve agenda item 13.
All right, motion by Councilmember Zuniga, second by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve agenda item 13. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilmember Tobias.
All right, thank you. Um, I know in the past we've worked with our engineering department, the city, with Leon and so forth. Uh, will they be able to, if this goes through in the future, will they be able to work with our city? How will they be able to work with our city going forward? Combining what kind of concepts they come up with with what our city is trying to accomplish? Because it looks like we would look at hiring a company, but then we're also got our city plans that we have as well. How are those two going to collaborate with each other?
Yeah, so, um, Mike Trimbold, Director of Transportation Public Works. So the way this plan would work is it really sets the template for how we're going to develop our multimodal system over the next 20 years or so. And so that's basically the general scope of what we're asking this, this consultant to do is to work with our community and to work with staff to develop this. A part of that will also come out of what projects would be teed up. So we would actually get some prioritized capital projects that we'd look to do to start to implement that. So in other words, if there's a certain roadway that's determined to be a, a four-lane minor arterial in the future, um, there would be recommendations for over time how those projects would be phased in. So that would be where then the city staff would come back and prioritize those from an actual, you know, kind of phasing and budgeting and potentially future bond programs to figure out how we actually get these improvements in over time.
Because I think that was our overall goal, um, that we were trying to accomplish the past several years is identifying which roads or which infrastructure needed, you know, aside from the bond, uh, roads that were decided on years, a couple of years ago on the 2022. Uh, I think that was what our, what we were originally trying to, to see where our city was at. Because it's very hard to say, all right, well, and I was dividing the city up into sectors like Northwest, Southwest, Kyle and so forth. This would, this company would be able to help I develop our master plan to where our city can then identify those specific roads and then put them in priority lists like we've always wanted and, and then add them to a CIP every budget year.
That's what we would intend to do with this plan. So we would have high-level recommendations for what roadways to improve and how to improve them over time. And then we as staff would then, you know, work on our side, potentially with consultants going forward to then prioritize what we would do. So for example, if a long-range plan for a roadway was to expand it, create a multimodal system on that roadway, we might do a preliminary engineering study with a consultant and better identify exactly what those improvements are and have a better scope project than we would actually prioritize going forward. Um, and so this plan will help us to get those key priorities for what, uh, major connections need to be made, what major roadways need to be improved. And then we can figure out how to start to make those connections with actual projects and scoping those out over time. So yes, my intention would be, our intention would be to create that CIP plan.
And then how, how would this company then want to work with the county? Because they just passed a road bond back in November. How are we going to be able to, how would they feel comfortable meshing with them as well? Because we're going to have to combine all of us together, the county and the city. Because there's going to be some streets that are going to be right at the tip of a county. But then again, the city takes over like about another three more miles down the road. So those are things that we're all going to have to be able to look at as well. Do you, do you think this company would be able to work with the county commissioners and so forth when it comes to when they start developing their scope and their designs?
That's actually something they spoke to, um, in their project approach was their ability to look at, uh, what other jurisdictions are doing and how to coordinate with them. Uh, both agencies like Tech Dot, um, agencies like Hays County, other cities in the region. Uh, because right, it's not just the city of Kyle, but it's how we're connecting to these other projects. And, and on a, and on a more recent scale, I will tell you, we've already started that coordination with Hays County. Uh, because I've looked at that map and our projects butt up right up against some of the 2024 bond projects. I'm very aware of that. In a prior life, I worked on the Hays County program, so very aware of that. We've started those coordination conversations with them and we'll work with our consultant to make sure that we are doing that coordination and they're very aware of what we're looking at in this plan and how it's connecting with their plans as well.
Yes, because a lot of the projects are east of Kyle, so it'd be from District Six and District Two. That's going to align with the, uh, the county bond and, and precinct two and all that. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Good point, good point, Mr. Tobias.
Yeah, hey, um, just real quick, uh, Mike, when you're talking about all considerations, uh, would light rail be on the discussion as well? That's something that a couple of residents have really been reaching out to me lately is a light rail project maybe going from, I know there's been discussion several times, it's brought up. I, I think, uh, UP was the last one to bring it up when they talked about light rail from San Antonio to Austin or maybe even further. But is that something that is still, if you know, with your knowledge, your experience, you think that's something that might be a reality in the future where we can look at that with some of our transportation needs? Or do you think that's kind of a moot point where it's just not going to happen?
I mean, I, I think through this study, we'd want to look at, you know, what are the best options to help our residents, uh, in our community move around, uh, both in the city and then around the region, right? Because the, and I think what you're talking to, council member, is that, that interregional connectivity, right? The inner-city connectivity. And so I think that is a part of what we'd be looking at or what are some of those best options? And again, multimodal, so we're looking at all those different modes. I don't want to suppose, and, and we do have our consultant here. I don't want to put any words in the consultant's mouth right now. But I think we'll be looking at all of those things and then coming back with some recommendations on, on how these things might fit together over time. And remember, this plan is for the long term. And Jake, I don't know if you want to talk to me more about that?
Yeah, Jake Gooden, City Government Corporation. I'll be the project manager for this project. Um, just a quick note about me, I've been doing this for over a decade in central Texas, uh, working with a lot of cities, Austin, Round Rock, Cedar Park, Leander, um, Bastrop, Fredericksburg, all over the place. So, um, to answer that question, yeah, so I think you're talking about, um, the Lone Star Rail. It's kind of a historic effort that was done, starts and stops over the last 30 years.
It was cities, uh, leading, I think, uh, Austin had a big part of it the first time. UP now is talking about it, but I'm, I'm, I'm continuing to see a lot of discussion, but I just don't know where they are in the process. If it's something we can actually look at it being an option in the future. So when we're planning our road projects, we can, uh, count that as part of, you know, the future infrastructure that'll help us transport, uh, residents back and forth from work, uh, or anything else.
Yeah, I think, I think that would start with a conversation on the front end of the project with UP, uh, whoever's got the actual rail infrastructure ownership and just seeing is, is there possibilities for shared use of that kind of facility, similar to what was done in the Austin area with the red line about 15, 20 years ago. And so we, we can certainly have conversations with those partners. We've done that before, um, to just see what, what is possible and then eliminate from there if there's things that are just not going to happen.
And, and just making sure when we're doing the process, we're looking at an equitable way to do it as well. I know that some of the people that have done light rail have not done it in a very equitable way and now it's hurting them pretty hard. Uh, same thing they've done with bus systems, things like that, making sure that we're taking the quantity and, you know, making sure we're not pricing people out of their homes is a big thing, right? So making sure we're doing, uh, a good job of what transportation looks like, but still keeping an eye on those dollars.
Yeah, and I will say one thing too, is that the Goodman Corporation was actually founded as a transit company. Uh, so we can all look at the kind of whole suite of options, not just the commuter rail, light rail, but like other applications that might be more, um, cost-effective for a place like Kyle. So we can look into all that.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 15, consider approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement with, uh, Purtanalis Electric Cooperative, Inc. in an amount of 1.6 million to underground the overhead utility from FM 2770 to FM 1626 for the Coles Crossing Roundabout improvements at Cromwell, Benner, and Sanders. Councilman Zuniga, you pulled out, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I think we've already seen the presentation, so I'll just jump to the questions. Um, so I know that we're doing the three design roundabouts and they are two-way, which can be a bit confusing. But my concern is like on the light poles that are coming down, that we still have sufficient, um, adequate safety lighting for, for people that, you know, are walking through there. So, um, it says that we're, we're going to replace lighting that we lose, uh, from these poles, um, as we finish this out.
Yeah, that, that is my understanding on the project. Um, I'll ask Lou Zhang, my assistant director, to also respond on that, but I believe so, yes.
Hi, I'm Lou Zhang, Assistant Director of CIP and Planning. Um, so illumination is considered as part of the project improvement from, um, 2770 to 1626. So for all the, um, undergrounding we're going to be doing that is approved by Taurus Two Board from 2770 to Cromwell, we're going to be replacing all those lighting to ensure there's enough illumination for that section of the road. There are four streetlights at the intersection of 1626, however. Um, the PEC lights, those lights are on the wooden poles. They're right next to the Tech Dot light. And for the first look, um, staff evaluation, we think there's enough coverage from the Tech Dot lights, um, over there. So that's why we have the language if necessary. Um, if it's not, it's deemed not necessary, we'll not be replacing those lights.
And so as we're, I guess, going through the road bond and we bring poles down and we do underground utilities, is that something that's going to happen with the, the new roads as well? That there's plenty of lighting, um, on those, uh, large designs, especially these four lanes, five lanes?
Yes, council member, we are looking at, um, still having illumination along those roadways. This is just, you know, undergrounding so we don't have the, again, from the aesthetic perspective, having those lines overhead, undergrounding where we can, where it's feasible to do. Uh, and again, this is a great partnership with PEC to do that, uh, through this agreement. And we'll be using this, this, uh, standard agreement, this template, basically, to do agreements on several projects where we're looking at similar partnerships of, for utility relocation.
Okay, thank you.
Council, uh, Councilmember Harris.
A thing on lighting. Coles Crossing is pretty well lit. Um, one of the things about roundabouts that is so important that we consider that the lighting needs to not be, um, as bright as you might expect because, and you know this, but coming around those roundabouts, if your eye is hot, having to kind of constantly adjust to the shadows and to the lighting, that's a problem, especially for older people like me. So, uh, the lighting really should be, should tend to be more subtle than your normal street lighting that is there now.
Well, and, and we'll definitely take a look at that, council member, as we're, as we're starting to put more roundabouts in place as far as the illumination. And I think that's one of the things we've talked about on the program side, is looking at our whole illumination program and making sure we have adequate lining, but it's also appropriate for the context, uh, of the, of the roadway or the improvement that we're putting in place.
Right, and that area is primarily residential.
And it will be dark sky friendly, so it's something that we've talked about for a long time. We're talking about these roads, we're, uh, master planning them and talking about the design. We definitely added that component to it. So making sure we got plenty of illumination, plenty of, uh, the illumination pointing down so that we were, uh, not, uh, contributing to the light pollution. So we're, we definitely are condescending of that when we're going for our designs.
I, I would assume the lighting has already been designed or no?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, it has been designed. Um, but again, as we're moving forward with other projects and things like that, we are been, we have been looking at illumination and kind of again, doing that assessment going forward. But yes, a lot of that has been programmed.
Can y'all, can y'all send the council the, the plans so that we can see what lights are going in, what they look like? That, I think that would help us a lot because I just, I have no idea what it's going to look like and would like to, you know. I think there's a happy medium between illumination and, uh, and also protecting, protecting of dark skies. But I just don't know if that's what's coming or not. And I think Councilmember Harris would also like to see that too, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
So, all right, motions?
Need approval of item number 15?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Harris, second by Councilmember McKinnney, that we approve agenda item 15. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 16, consider approval of a resolution to approve an agreement with Housing Works Austin, conduct a housing study for an amount of $45,000. Ms. Trulow.
So on November 19th, uh, council directed staff to develop a housing strategy to diversify the city's housing options. Uh, Housing Works helped the city provide data in an assessment of affordable, of an affordable housing project in summer of 2024. So this planned housing assessment will build off previous data, uh, that was collected by Housing Works and, and analyze current housing needs and inventory to better fulfill and develop a housing strategy and to avoid the patchwork approach of housing diversity. Um, this material is from our partners at Housing Works of Austin. Um, the assessment research will include, uh, a housing inventory and data needs. Um, data regarding current housing availability and housing needs, uh, will be collected at different income levels and will be, uh, included, including an inventory of all affordable housing units. Uh, housing dynamics and conditions, data on family and household income, uh, family and household makeup and housing tenure, qualitative assessment of housing needs, uh, qualitative data through policymaker and city staff interviews and other key stakeholder interviews, including community feedback sessions. Housing support programs assessment, which will include information on existing housing and affordability support programs, and then existing reports, uh, looking at an assessment of, and analysis of existing plans and reports that may be in place. Um, they've outlined several opportunities for feedback, including key stakeholder interviews, uh, up to 30 interviews, uh, with stakeholders, including elected leaders, city leadership and staff, community partners and members, uh, from the development community and service providers. Uh, three open community meetings will be held to gather feedback and provide opportunities to the public for broad input. Uh, up to two focus groups may be conducted to get feedback from particular groups collectively based on staff guidance, uh, tabling at community events, uh, for a limited number of events to get, uh, feedback based on staff guidance. And then a survey may be shared with a broader community to provide, uh, feedback to the consultant. Deliverables that we anticipate right now, uh, first will be a report that will be created with data and analysis, including an assessment of housing at different income levels. Uh, report will be created with recommendations regarding strategies that can be implemented to address housing needs and diversify housing types based on available resources. Uh, presentations to, of the report to city council staff and other bodies upon completion of the research. Um, preliminary findings may be shared with city council and other bodies based on need and staff guidance. Um, and then periodic meetings will be held with staff to check in and gain feedback through the research and analysis phase. Uh, based on staff's perspective, preliminary information may also be shared with other groups for feedback. The timeline that we anticipate at this time will be approximately seven months, taking us into summer to fall, uh, with preliminary findings coming back in the fall. Uh, overall, the cost of this study is, uh, $65,000. $45,000 will come from the city of Kyle and $20,000 will be, um, provided to Housing Works through, uh, external philanthropic grant that they've received and allocated towards work, um, in Kyle. And that grant is specifically from the Asset Funders Network, which is a central Texas philanthropic group, uh, for, that Housing Works has to, uh, conduct research and provide support to local partners uh, focusing on advancing regional affordability. So we're going to take advantage of some philanthropic work that's happening in the central Texas region. Uh, so the options we have today are to consider approval of the resolution, uh, to approve the agreement or to deny approval of the agreement. And staff recommends approval.
Councilmember Hauser.
Uh, thank you, Rosie. Is now the time where you would want any sort of feedback, uh, on the scope?
Sure.
Okay, is there any way that we can add, uh, some comps to other cities who have experienced growth similar to ours, looking at, um, like median income? And how, um, you know, even comps, if they didn't end up well in terms of how these cities, um, chose to develop as a result of, of that growth?
Do you have any specific cities in mind?
No, but I'm definitely going to look into it in the next couple of days.
Georgetown, Flugerville, Cedar Park, you can look at, you're wrongful, so those are cities that have been growing pretty quick. So, uh, that are on the I-35 corridor. Look, honestly, I, I keep thinking the way Georgetown and, you know, Round Rock have developed, we're kind of seeing that trend happen this way now. So if they've gone through it, maybe they'll reach out, you could reach out to them.
And we can certainly point the consultant in those directions.
No, 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 that, that's totally fine. Yeah, I just want to get a sense of, of, um, some other places who have experienced the similarities and looking at what their, um, percentage breakdown is of housing inventory based on, um, income and how income. is of housing inventory based on income and how income rose or shrunk based on the development patterns?
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Tobias.
Should we also look at maybe outside of central Texas? Should we look at maybe up in the Dallas area or other areas around? Are we going to be specifically with just, of course, we want to stay in the state of Texas, but maybe just different areas that have shown the particular growth? Because I know just in New Braunfels and Kyle and Cedar Park, we're not the only ones on this planet. There's other cities out there and across the state, we can kind of compare that those type of numbers as well to see where the population is coming and growing in different areas. Because I know there's the the thought of people moving to Texas, but we're populated because a lot of people are not leaving Texas as well or leaving the areas because families grow up here, they graduate here, and they work and they buy homes here. So maybe seeing those numbers as well in education, work, you know, different types of jobs and so forth, careers in certain areas, because maybe that would also help with the household number as far as the income for the household numbers.
We can share that with Housing Works.
Just one more thing, and I don't necessarily know how this can be measured, but variables, as in water, when we look at future development patterns in our city and housing inventory and what that could look like, I think accessibility to water would impact, for example, how much sprawl we have with, because, you know, we don't want to be incentivized or giving people more of a reason to utilize water outdoors, you know, 15, 20, 30 years from now. So it's just another. Go ahead.
Yeah, questions? Let me ask questions. So I know you're a big promoter of housing options, Mr. Heizer. We just had like a housing analysis last year, didn't we? So like, what new information are we looking for here? Like, is the goal to try to find out how do we get more market rate housing from developers? Is that like, what is what is it that we're trying to achieve with this contract? Because there's a lot of housing that's going on in Kyle. What is it that we don't have? There's a lot of apartments. There's a lot of houses for rent. Do we need more housing? Is that what we're looking at? Or do we need a specific socioeconomic gap of housing that you're, what is it you're trying to find?
Well, what we did last year was, to answer the question, do we need more affordable housing? This is what do what do our future development patterns look like? So I think to your latter point of the socioeconomics of it all, and how do we create sustainable communities that promote, you know, homeownership, that promote, you know, trying to grow generational wealth? Then number one factor that leads to generational wealth is owning property. How do we lower the barrier to entry for Kyle residents to own homes that aren't outside of, you know, what they can afford? I think just looking at the housing bubble from 2020 to 2022, you had a lot of people who moved here and purchased homes that they couldn't necessarily afford or necessarily needed, just because they had to leave other areas, you know, that were where, you know, the cost of living increased, you know, before before hours. You know, gentrification typically happens when cities experience rapid growth. That's something I'd like to try to prevent. And if we can glean anything from a study on what housing inventory could look like, you know, in the future, to help us make better educated decisions, then that's something I think that's a very wise investment.
Well, I'm not going to argue there's not a need for housing because it provides security for people. And, you know, you have, the more affordable your house is, the more you can invest in education, which gets you, you know, moving, you know, into a better financial situation. Those things I agree with. I just wasn't sure if you're, if the intent is to find where there's a lack of affordable housing, maybe in desirable neighborhoods, and that's where we might have areas that, you know, we could diversify more in. But if it's to concentrate in, as we looked at social vulnerability areas, I don't know that the city needs to be doing that, you know, per se.
This information, I think, can help us address those areas in which there are social vulnerabilities when it comes to homeownership and affordability. If we don't have a comprehensive look at what our housing inventory is now from single-family townhomes, condos, apartments, that's doesn't, it makes our jobs more difficult when we are presented with new developments and we have to try to provide feedback on what those developments should look like. We don't want more of the same. We want to provide people with the ability to buy in at different price points, and different price points require different options.
Right. Yeah, I would just be careful of not creating more more social pressures on the problem that you're trying to, I guess, resolve in finding different affordability options, because different people are in different incomes, like new starter homes.
That's the exact, what you're saying, right, is the exact thing we're trying to solve for, is we're trying to give those people different options, so it's not just apartment, condo, single-family home. Is that?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm opening, I'm open to the to the analysis report. I just was trying to figure out, you know, what this was going to achieve from the last one.
It's about data.
It's completely different. The with the study was solely, last year was solely focusing on whether or not we needed more affordable housing, because we had some up developments upcoming that we're going to have single or have affordable housing as part of them. And we wanted information that would help us make a decision. Is that something we need in our town?
And this is going to be about data.
Hang on, we got a couple of heads up. Councilmember Tobias. All right, Councilmember McKinney.
I'll admit, I was having a hard time understanding how we were going to use this data once we got it. But having heard a little of this conversation, if it helps us to to plan our future developments with a little more intelligence and a little more forethought, so that, you know, we're providing the best value to our citizens, it's, it seems like a no-brainer.
Councilmember Tobias.
Yeah, because the way I'm looking at this as well, even though we're talking about housing, it, it, when we were going through our comprehension plan, you know, trying to figure that out, we've had many, many meetings over that through the years. I think it it would be helpful that the city at least has some form of data, some some more details, information about where a lot of these housing are in our city. As the populations continue to grow, if there are questions about our affordability, if there are questions about the lack or need of or the abundance of townhomes and single-family homes and so forth, we have all that information available to us to where, like what to counter off of Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Heizer is saying, we can have some of that when we start planning future developments. And we could just kind of see where the gap is. And if there's any kind of services, city services, that we need to start planning for, let's say, office space for utilities or something like that, we can kind of see the gate, the areas where we might need those specific areas for our city. So because we got it, we're still evolving, we're still growing. And so we just, I think it would just help us in that sense to have those numbers.
Councilmember Russo.
I'm good. Mark actually hit on.
Yeah. So what I would say is, number one, I think that this is very good for all the reasons that have been stated, but the comparative comparative cities question, I think, is very interesting. I think the Dallas suburbs, you know, we think about median incomes in areas, you know, the even the northern suburbs in Austin have a 30 to 50% higher median income. Every every zip code you go further north, the median income grows. The comparable cities I think of are some of the Houston suburbs, like, you know, maybe Richmond or Pearland. I think of Saguin. If there are going to be a Dallas suburb or a Fort Worth suburb, it might be more like Burleson or basically on the south side, because a lot of the, you know, where the technology oftentimes, the the higher-end development always goes to the north end, that, you know, the south end gets it different. You know, I've always been told and have seen reports that Kyle has, you know, the, you know, in terms of the affordability component, that it's the number one reason people come here is for affordability. But that doesn't necessarily translate into the creation of wealth, like what Mayor Pro Tim was talking about. And really just understanding what we have and then and then where our gaps are, I think, would be extremely, extremely helpful in in planning. And also, it's a tool that we could use when developers come and try to tell us what we have to have. It's, it's really common for developers to just pigeonhole us and say, you're going to, you have to do this one thing because that's what we know will sell down here. That may or may not be in our best long-term interest. So a good comprehensive study, I think, would would help with that. Councilmember Harris.
Will this include the ETJ?
I don't think so. I think we're predominantly talking about incorporated city limits.
I'd suggest that we take a look at the ETJ. My sense right now is that although Kyle has a reputation for being very affordable, people are being or moving out into the ETJ or when they come to this area, they're going to the ETJ because of affordability issues within the city limits. So, you know, we may be needing to look at where we begin incorporating other areas.
We can certainly talk to Housing Works about what that would look like and how that could be factored into the analysis.
We have very little control over the ETJ. I understand that. But I do think that that may be an important piece of our housing, especially our lower-income housing that's being missed.
Councilmember Zuda.
Yeah, and that's to my point on Dr. Laurley. I was, Rosie, do you think you can get all that information from this study? Because what I don't want to do is just do something to make us feel good. I want to make sure that what we do hopefully will be a solution to when these developments do come to our city, we're able to integrate the diversity of housing for people who may want to live in a more desirable, you know, area but can't afford that. But maybe and be, that could become a tool to, you know, maybe build some more market rate, because it doesn't really help us in the long term just to stack more affordable housing or workforce housing in where it's already abundant enough. I don't see that as fixing the long-term, you know, direction of the city. It's got to be diverse for that. People have the ability to live where they want to live and not be financially an obstacle for that.
So what this, what this study will do is it will, is purposefully not focusing only on income-restricted or affordable housing. It's purposefully taking a much broader look so that we'll have data and and strategies and recommendations that we can choose to to use to help guide the discussions that we're going to have with developers when they want to come here, so that we have something to base our feedback to them on. So it gives us basically the ammunition that we might need to have those conversations with developments when they're coming.
I would just, I would just add one more element. I think discussion's been interesting about what are the comparables and how do we try to measure those. I think we can look around the state to find some that are close to our median income, you know, whether a plus or minus factor on median income, and look at the affordability that we have in those communities and compare that then to the Kyle community to see how we stack up against those comparables. And then what are the shortcomings that we have? And then to try to outline strategies to identify ways to provide more housing that will meet some of the gaps that we have. I think for us, the first thing is to try to see, well, what does the data say? I think Kyle is generally affordable. That's why you see it growing so much. There's so many people coming to Kyle for lots of reasons. But there are, that doesn't mean that it's perfect. And there are some problems with the housing supply and some of the needs that we see. So what are those gaps? And then what are the strategies to try to attack the gaps that we see? That's, I think, the really the essential element of the study that we're looking to do. But I think with the comments that you've had earlier, we can try to look around the state to try to maybe find, what do we think are the right comparables out there that kind of match up with Kyle? And how do they fit with some of these metrics? And then how do we compare? Hopefully, that would help provide some context. We could bring that back to you. And then based on that, we can certainly have more work, more analysis done on that. But maybe that's a first step to try to provide at least a benchmark of where we are. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I think it would also be good to see what our median income is over time. Because when I was first here, the median income was like $88,000. I think now it's like 80, 81. And so that'd be, I'd be curious to know what, you know, what factors have have led to lower median income in the city. I could think of a lot. I don't think that's necessarily a negative thing, but it's just factors. So just something to.
I like to see the trends in growth. I mean, what are we doing? Is our elderly population growing? Are, are, you know, families growing? What what's driving the growth? You know, is it single people? I mean, that's going to be the numbers we're looking for. To address your comment, I don't think we're voting on a feel-good program. I think this was all about data and making sure that we're moving forward in the city. So, yeah, I wouldn't vote for a feel-good program, to say the.
No, no, I agree, Mr. Rizzo. It's just sometimes we take a vote because you want to feel good, right? I want it to be meaningful.
True. I agree with that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 16.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilmember McKinney that we approve agenda item 16. Is there discussion on that motion? Halls in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Councilmember Tobias, you want to do yours next, and we'll do the road.
Yes.
Agenda item 18, consider directing the city manager to evaluate options and provide recommendations to the city council on how to improve traffic safety at the intersection of Dacey Lane and Downing Way.
Thank you very much. This item that I'm bringing forward has been a very big concern for a lot of the residents in the area of Kensington Trails subdivision, including other areas, individuals that that drive that road. I know I just barely sent it to you, Mr. Bryan. I had some sent some photos. I was wondering if I could pull some of those photos up if you can, images. I got them from Google Earth or Google Maps. I can give you an area. We've been experiencing some serious car accidents in that area. Residents, there's a resident that lives nearby stated that they, on their Facebook page, that they've seen at least seven to eight accidents in this corner. And my projection is, I think, a lot of it has to do with speed, and I'll call Chief Barnett here in just a moment to discuss a lot of that. But one of the considerations that I've I've tried to push forward was to try to get a speed study, or not so much a speed study, but a traffic study done twice, an STV study to see if a streetlight is comparable to that area. I think the last one that we submitted out, and it was actually to the day that Ms. Amber Shites had given us, was on the 14th. And it stated that we did not, it did not qualify or needed one for the, here it is, the improvements. Let's see if I can pull that up. Yeah, so this one here, they did the study back on the 14th of February of last year. Part of the study that was stated here that a, the Dacey Lane improvements, BB Parkway, City Kyle, Downing, which meets the warrants of the signal and a possible roundabout, but the signal lights did not warrant at either location. And so with that, we're still continuously having car accidents that happen. I think one of the most serious one was about two months ago. I rolled up on it right after it happened. It was a truck that literally slammed into another one, and there was just debris everywhere. And I actually sent the photos to Mayor Mitchell and Mr. Langley, saying, we've got to be able to do something about this. So I, if you don't mind, I'd like to call it Chief Barnett, because there had been some residents asking a total of number of how many accidents, sir, that's been at the intersection, and also some of your feedback of what you've heard from the officers in that area as well, including speed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. Councilmember, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about this location. So the Kyle Police Department responds to approximately 2,000, just a little over 2,000 accidents a year in the city limits of Kyle. Out of those 2,000-plus, accidents a year in the city limits of Kyle. Out of those 2,000-plus accidents, about a quarter or so, 500, 550, 600 on the last few years' average of those are deemed serious accidents, meaning they have serious bodily injury or significant vehicle damage. When we look at this very specific location, over the last five years, we've had 21 total accidents at this intersection, with six of those occurring in 2024. And then, another question, sir, that you wanted to know is a little bit about traffic enforcement, because we've certainly had a request from the community to increase our presence, and that is to help slow down speeding motorists, and then to draw attention to those that are trying to emerge from the residential community or perhaps enter the community, to follow the traffic laws, use their turn signals, not fail to yield right away as they're pulling in or pulling into or out of the community. And we've written a total of 47 citations, 19 of those being in 2024, at the request of the community. The two, maybe three things that stood out to our officers, number one, there's, there's a speeding issue. Number two, there are, there are two issues, one turning into and the other turning out of the neighborhood. Those exiting that desire to go south on Daisy Lane have to cross several lanes of traffic. And if there are members turning into the community, they're kind of blocking the view of those members as they pull out, and they're usually getting hit by another passing car. They're not able to see beyond the vehicles in the turn lane. The other ones have rear-ended other cars while they're waiting to turn into the community. And I think our officers are there, they're there weekly now to try to have an officer presence until we figure out maybe the direction that we want to go. I hope that, I hope that's answered your question on some numbers.
Yes, because I, I see here at the total accidents so far this year has been six. Last year was three, and the year before was three. And then, of course, the citations, a total of 47 in the area.
You said six so far this year?
Six so far, including right here. Yeah, year-to-date accidents on Daisy and Downing. It was from the information that the, the information you sent to me today. I was looking at it.
Yeah, I think, is that six? Is that the, the yellow chart with year and accidents?
Uh, I think it says here, it says year 2020 was two.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-one was seven.
Correct.
And then 22 and 23 was three each. And then to, so far here, 2024 says six.
2024 had six.
Six accidents in.
Yes, sir. In 2024.
It's 2024, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
24, I'm sorry. 2024, we had a total of six. So.
Still a lot.
Some people are asking, like, how many we've had so far this year. But still, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. It's, it's a very dangerous intersection. And, and a lot of the residents are, even I've driven it, and my wife, and when you're, especially when you're trying to go to school, to go to Science Hall, the biggest issue is we, we have walkers. We have kids that walk that area, especially on Downing. There's also a major speed factor issue that we have on there. We can talk about that here later on. But I'm just trying to get the city's response to how we could be able to make the improvements there. I know, I think there was a roundabout that could be, that was a possibility for that area or was looked at. Not sure how that's going to work with four lanes. So these are questions that the residents are, are coming up with, and they're getting very, very concerned as they drive in and out of the traffic. And I brought this up to Councilman Rizal before. He's driven out there before, before we had the lights. We did make an improvement last year by adding a street light to the corner, which I'm very grateful for Amber and Brian for helping on that. It has lit up the intersection to where you could be able to turn into Downing. But I, I'm just trying to get some direction on how we can really improve safety on it.
Councilor Rizal.
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah, definitely, you know, Mike brings up a really good point on this. It's getting really dangerous. The street light, when we went over to Mike's house one day, my wife and I, to go drop some off, we, the first thing Paula said, boy, this intersection is really dark. So the improvements really helped with the light. But when we started looking at the traffic flow here, we're having this issue all over the city. And some of it plays speed. I think even dropping the speed limit from 45 to 35 wouldn't make a big difference, because people are still going to speed no matter what. And, and we can't have officers 24/7 there. So I thought, I thought the biggest solution here would be an improvement to Daisy and Seton Parkway. And the improvement I'm talking about is the light there. And the reason why is that as Seton opens up and we do the rest of the Coler's bypass, this is going to be a major thoroughfare. Having a light here would also stop people and give the opportunity for all the residents down at Kensington Trail, but even across the street over at, what do you call it, Fountain Grove, where you've got that small mobile home park there, making sure they have a chance to get out as well. So having that intermittent stop and go definitely will help. And the reason I know that is when I'm on Congress, anytime I'm trying to pull out of one of the, what do you call it, driveways, I know that I'm waiting for the light down the street to change, because that's going to give me that break in between. So I'm thinking that's kind of what we could probably do here. It'd be something permissive, because once we do build out the Coler's Crossing, that Seton Parkway is going to be a thoroughfare. I mean, people are going to be hitting that like crazy. The other thing it does is for the senior zone right there, the, the new building, it'll slow people down coming back and forth. So now they have an opportunity to get in and out. So I think this would be a win if we did a light there for the entire Daisy Lane area. And that's just my suggestion.
Councilor Harris.
I was going to address the senior zone area. That's going to significantly add to traffic and significantly add to the risk of accidents coming out of that driveway. So if we take, I think it's, Daisy Lane would, would warrant a really close look at how the traffic now is going to be moving. There are no left-turn lanes, I don't think, on Daisy Lane. And coming out of the driveway from the senior center will, will be a dangerous thing. And we've already talked about, we know that intersection needs to be modified. So taking a whole look at, from Seton Parkway on up, would probably be a great idea.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. But I, I think for the issue that we're having right now, having that light there would be, would solve a lot of the issues. It gives people a chance to pull out of their intersections. And that one light would serve the entire area. And it would definitely give you that one break every time that light changes, to be able to pull out of that neighborhood, all the neighborhoods up and down that street, and even from the senior zone all the way down. But I really think we need to be proactive on this, because once the Coler's is built, I mean, that's going to be a hotbed for traffic.
So, Mayor and Council, if I could, just to, to give you some information about things we've been looking at, Councilman Tobias and I have talked about this in looking at some of the accident data. It is a concerning location and something that we want to address. What we'd like to do is come back and give you comprehensive analysis of that and some suggestions. I haven't, Councilman Rizzo, I haven't looked at that potential, potential intersection of Seton. But we can look at that piece and look at how that would work with a potential traffic light at Downing, as well as a left turn lane, a dedicated left turn lane. I think that's one of the things that's been mentioned, neither an acceleration or deceleration lane, to help with some of the accidents there. Looking at all that together and then bringing back a complete solution to it would be what we'd recommend. I've also seen some good, on another part of Daisy that we worked up, looked at by Chappa Middle School, there was a school crossing there that had been difficult for some of the kids to get across from one side to the other over at Chappa Middle School. One of the things we did was install some lighting, better lighting at that location for the pedestrians. And then we also had, I'm forgetting the name of the signs, but as you, as you drive up to the signs, the, the speed will flash at you and determine if you're over the speed limit, it'll come in red. And that has a really good impact on driver behavior. Sometimes we see that in combination with all these other factors. We think it can come up with a, a better solution there to help with some of the safety. So we're looking at some of that. Unfortunately, I just don't have all of that ready to present this evening. But the council's direction is for us to go and prepare that information. We'll be glad to come back and give you a recommendation of how to proceed.
Yeah, I, I would, that's one of the items that I was thinking about when it comes to inside the neighborhood itself. And I know that I have requested twice the speed trailers. And in my, my opinion, it kind of helped a little. I know some people may have felt like, well, all it does is, it just gives the speed. But I think exactly what we're saying on Daisy, if we, if we look at not just in that neighborhood, but look at it as a budget item for some other neigh, all the other neighborhoods around, that we look at modernizing our, our speed signs in neighborhoods to where we could get those to where when the cars, when the cars are driving down, it flashes the red, you know, you're going way too fast. Maybe that's a little deterrent there, that you need to slow down in that area. That could be something we could put on Downing. That also could be something we put on Daisy. We could put also on Stagecoach eventually, in Amberwood and other places.
Scott Street.
Or Scott Streets. Oh, my God, yeah, Scott Street. But, I mean, if anything right now, I, I just fear that we're going to hate, I hate to say this, but I, I have a fear, and I don't want this to happen. I don't want to have a fatality there. Because that last accident that I sent you all the photos, it, it was very, very bad. Very bad. The car was, the truck was split in half. I think there's somebody who may have gotten thrown out of the car. It was, and it's right at the intersection where people are pulling into their homes, and you've got kids walking home.
Would you like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed with that comprehensive plan?
Yes. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, please, on Agenda IT, and 18, to take the recommendations from city managers, to make the recommendations for the improvements, and to come back with a final analysis on their findings.
All right. Motion by Councilor Tobias, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, that we direct staff to proceed with the comprehensive plan for intersection improvements on Daisy. Is there a discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up.
Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item 17, receive a report, hold discussion, find staff direction regarding the renaming of South Go Fourth Road. Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Melissa McCollum, Chief Development Officer. I have the privilege of bringing back to you kind of some first snapshot of the renaming of South Go Fourth Road. If you remember, staff identified this road really being a good candidate for road renaming. Originally, it was planned to connect up with Go Fourth. It no longer is. So this portion of, of South Go Fourth that is currently constructed by the industrial park, but is planning to extend, really does need to be renamed. At your suggestion, we ran a contest from February 10th to the 24th, and we provided all those lists of names in Exhibit C. This was kind of a snapshot of the contest rules and regulations that we had for that, you know, really kind of limiting, you know, kind of crazy words or definitely profane or derogatory words. And also in our ordinances, we do have support currently in our road renaming ordinances for names that reflect historic ethnic and cultural diversity. So we put that into the rules and regulations as kind of an added guideline. And then, again, all road renaming will have to be approved through an ordinance. So this is not the end of it today. It will still have to come back for an ordinance. Again, with a public hearing. So this is kind of the road renaming policy that we have in Chapter 38. And then for naming, when using naming criteria, this is also from our code of ordinances, the more prominent a public place or significant the naming should be, you know, it should be appropriate to the particular area, straight from our code, and then looking at cultural diversity. And then if you're doing something specific, this also relates to facilities, if you're renaming, renaming or naming facilities. But, you know, does it have a cultural significance for generations and generations to come, a positive image, and all kind of the other things associated with, with having names? So for the semitals, we got a lot of semitals in the contest. I would say we had about 300 semitals. There was some duplicates in that. So I think there was like 208 unique names, everything from flora and fauna to historic names for Kyle and historic people in Texas. And we even had people recommending names of their favorite pet, you know. So there was a lot of entries into that. And so there's a lot of variety to, to do. So in Exhibit C, we've also kind of categorized them as names that have not previously been used or duplicated. And so our GIS and 911 addressing really looked at those list of submitted names. Some of the names, like Porter is a great name, and it's very historic and applies to Texas, but we already have that street name. So it's not really applicable to have another street with that same name associated with it. Bluebonnet, for example, was a flower that people really identify with and was recommended several times. But there were some conflicts with that right outside of our city limits and ETJ. So there's two bluebonnets pretty close already in the, in the county as is. So really, green are names that have not been previously used or duplicated, and they don't create a known conflict within the city in our 911 addressing. And I kind of abstracted those names, 45 of them, out of the green 82 that kind of meet the contest rules and regulations for names that apply to Texas, as well as kind of have some flora and fauna. Yellow are names that you could consider, just kind of additional thought should go for those. And honestly, the red names really are duplicative or overused or somewhere else already. So lots of flora, fauna were included in the, in the road renaming for natural elements, historical entries. There was quite a few. So everything from, related directly to Kyle, related to the area, including kind of San Marcos and Hayes County area, and then related specifically to our, our town, and then even some Texas relations. So there's quite an opportunity. It was kind of fun to read people's suggestions on what these names would be, and really why it made, it was important to them. So people were very forthcoming to, with what they were hoping. And so there was multiple entries and duplicate. There was a lot of pie references, you know, for that. Again, Bluebonnet and Fajita Drive were both listed as well, having multiple duplications, previous, I think, road renaming.
Hang on, hang on. So in the green, which, which street got the most recommendations? Had the most votes?
I'd probably say Tex, Tex Hudson, or Hudson Boulevard, or Tex Hudson Boulevard probably had the most duplicative names. There's lots of play on names, Yarforth, Forward, Gone Back. And then again, if you want to give me direction on where we want to go from here on, on the road renaming.
All right. Brian?
Well, it's a lot of names that, that were given to us in this process. And I, I think what we're looking for is kind of next steps in the process. It could be, council decides, here's three or four names that we want to go back and ask the citizens to vote on. And then their distinct winner or, you know, of that process, we could go back and, and ask. Certainly, council could just move forward with any name that you wanted to have. We're just looking for a direction on the process, and it could be very simple or, or more complex, depending on what you wanted. And perhaps there was a name that you guys were thinking of that hasn't been mentioned in this process that you wanted to bring up. That's also an option that could come up in this discussion tonight. So that's really the intent of the discussion, is to bring this back to you, to show you what the results were, and then try to see where we need to go from here.
Yeah. So I, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. I, because, you know, we haven't had a chance to present our names that we, that we would consider as well, you know, to participate in, in that way. So I think it'd be good if anybody has names to go through. I've got six that I have come up with that I'd like to, you know, throw out there. And anyone else that has names. And then from there, we see kind of where, where the feeling is. It could be a name you bring up, or it could also be a name that you identified out of the community feedback. And then we can have a little discussion and see what the consensus is. Councilor Rizal.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I definitely have a name. And one of the reasons, when I was looking through the list, the first name that really stood out to me was Alvarez Avenue. And so after Paula Alvarez, who was the first Hispanic woman elected to city council, Paula's not doing so well. She's up in age and has a lot of health issues. But not to recognize someone who was, you know, broke barriers that opened the door for other women and for other Hispanic women, for Hispanics in general, is, is something that we should look at. Look, honestly, I, I think we owe it to her. I mean, she broke barriers. I mean, during a time where there was just men being elected to council, she actually was a Hispanic woman that took the initiative and came out and served her community. And I, I kind of think is something we should look at when we're looking at names. I mean, I looked at a lot of these names. I, I think about Mr. Chappa being a school named after him, for the contributions he did for the school district is great. And I, I see a lot of the names, Tobias' name, for contributions for the school district as well. And I think not to recognize Ms. Alvarez, especially right now, when, you know, there's not a lot of Hispanics being recognized in a lot of what we, the accomplishments we've had in, in our city. I, I definitely think this is an opportunity for us to finally recognize a woman that really made a difference in our community.
Councilor McKinney.
Yeah, I think we've all got a, a list that we, we've got in the back of our mind. And coincidentally, her name was at the very top of mind as well. Her family's been here for a long her name was at the very top of mind as well. Her family's been here for a long time. She had to move her home to make way for I-35. That's how long that she's been there. So she is also still a current resident. So I think that would be a very nice thing to do.
Most of the time, people get things named after them after they die.
Exactly.
Here's an opportunity to do it before that and to recognize her for her contribution.
Additional thoughts, comments?
Well, I had six. So I just thought I would go through them. Ms. Alvarez was not on the list, although that's a great recommendation as well. So number one was Chevo Pastrano Senior. Chevo served as a council member from 1986 to 2001. That puts him in the running for the longest-serving council member in the history of the city of Kyle. Number two would be Becky Selbera. Becky served on the city council from 2002 to 2017. Over the, basically, since the city of Kyle became a home rule city and had a charter, she served under Mayor Atkins. She served, or not under, but alongside five different mayors, from Mayor Atkins all the way up until the end of Mayor Webster and the start of me, which puts her in the running of having, and honestly, during that time, the city of Kyle transformed. And so I thought that she made a lot of sense. I also thought about Julie Albertson and Spencer Thomas, which is really not the pie brand, but recognizes the impact that the two of them made on the city of Kyle. Another one that I thought of was Ann Strom. So Ann Strom wrote this book, The Prairie City: History of Kyle, Texas. If you read like other books, like Here's Kyle Tough, this is the story of Edwin Kyle, but it also talks about the founding of the city of Kyle. It takes from its notes liberally from Ann Strom's work. The additional, the Traces of Texas book that was written here not too long ago also draws from the work that Ann Strom did. She was involved heavily in the city of Kyle in the 80s and in the 70s. She worked on the bicentennial celebration in 1976, which was probably the most well-planned major event that the city of Kyle's ever had. The president of Texas A&amp;M University came and gave a commencement at that address. And again, the amount of work that she put in to create and compile this history, I thought was impressive. And to my knowledge, Ann has never been honored with any kind of naming. There's just no one I know of who's done something like this. I also thought of the Tobias name as well. The Tobias name does have its roots in the school district, but it's obviously more than that. It's a family legacy that goes beyond just school districts into public service for municipalities as well. And then finally, a name that's not, that came up number two when we dropped Fajita Drive and it went with veterans, number two was Martin Luther King. And that's something, at the time, there was a lot of discussion from the, there's a panel of 16 different people that were here. And the discussion was that whenever the next street naming came around, that Martin Luther King, because it was a very close second, would be a street name that we would consider naming. Every town has one. We do not. So those are the six names that I had. I think some of those were in this list or at least recommended on some level in this list. And I wanted to at least get some feedback on those names as well.
Councilor Tobias?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Mitchell, for recognizing the Tobias family right off the bat. Ironically, if you look back in our history, that is the farming land. That area is where my family used to farm, right there. It led all the way up to Tobias Elementary School. So that is the stretch of cotton fields, cornfields, that grandpa and all them used to work back in that area as well. But I also recommend Ms. Alvarez as well, because she is somebody who was our first mayor. And I've known her as well. Those are good recommendations, Mr. Rizzo. Pastrano as well. You're recognizing somebody from the city council, the longest-serving. And one other person that I was going to recommend, who was also a farmer back then, or somebody who was also a teacher from the Hayes School District many, many years ago, was Mr. Don Brooks. People may not remember who he was, but he was a very gentle soul. And he was somebody who was our bus driver, but our history teacher. But he did have a legacy here in our city. And his name always comes up to mind, along with, of course, the Caraway family and so forth. But those are the ones that I would like to, that I would suggest.
Well, I heard three Paula Alvarez's. So what do y'all want to do from here?
Look, I think all of y'all had really good suggestions, really good names. I think we have an opportunity here to honor someone that, you know, broke barriers and a lot for women. And I think that here's an opportunity before her passing or anything, you know, hopefully it's long from now. But I know her health has really declined. But to do something to honor her and for her contribution, I think would be great. And I would love to suggest it. I don't know what we need from us as a suggestion or as a motion or what, but I would love the motion that we name the new road Paula Alvarez Avenue.
Is there any issue without Avenue Boulevard, anything along those lines?
No, if it's okay. I think Avenue or Boulevard are appropriate, as well as Road and Street.
And I'm good with either or.
Okay. I think the recommendation was Avenue, Alvarez Avenue.
Motion?
Well, I just have a question.
I didn't see one to speak in. Do we want to make this decision right now? Or do we want to take these, the names, and come back and take a vote? I mean, I don't, I think these are all great suggestions. I just, this is just being presented. You know, the city has a history of, you know, moving quickly on road names. So do we want to take a beat, take down these names, and then come back at the next meeting and take a vote after we've had time to think it all over?
You've had, since Friday, with this list, so.
I'm just asking a question. I just, this is.
I will say, no matter what, I'll have to come back with a public hearing and an ordinance for this. But if you were able to hone in and limit it and make a decision.
You can't come back with an ordinance if we don't give you a name.
Yes. So.
So should we use those names that we recommend and make them the top 10 and then do the survey, or no?
That's up to you. I'm here to.
It'd be fine. I'm totally fine to let the community.
Just to say that we, some of those names are already on the list of there. So to just narrow down the top 10 or whatever and then just, because I want to be able to, again, have the residents have a say if they feel that they want to have a say in it.
Well, I kind of think the list was the same, you know. So it was a big list. We look at the green, which is highlighted, no conflicts. The green, you had the yellow and you had your red. So and the reason is that, you know, the more we drag this on, the longer it's going to take. And we're going to get more people calling us. Look, the last time we did this, I had like 10 residents call me why it should be named after them. And do we want to go down that path? I mean, it's up to y'all. I'm good with either or. I'd love to honor somebody that needs to be honored. But if we want to go a different path, I'll be okay with that, too.
Well, one thing we could do is, you know, everybody was just coming up with whatever name they could think of. But if we narrow it down to the list of the names that we've discussed, then we could put little bios beside each one, and then it's a vote. You know, you could have people vote. But then, do you want to be bound by the vote? And then is it a situation where everybody's recruiting for votes?
The longer this plays out, the more you're opening yourself to people coming down and being, that's kind of what happened. The last time we named a road, there was people that were, there are families that have been here a long time that felt like the road should be. Named after their family, right? I got those phone calls as well. I must have gotten about 20 phone calls the time, last time when we were going through, you know, the naming of Veterans Drive. So the longer we keep this open, the longer we're going to get more people calling us. And everybody has a legitimate reason to call us, right? But it's up to y'all. I mean, if y'all want to go through that, we'll go through it. But guarantee there's going to be a lot of people calling you, trying to persuade you why it should be after their family, even if it's not on this list.
Ketsberger?
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning on what Mr. Heizer said. I don't want to rush through this. I know we've seen the list, but this was a community list, right? So people gave us their time, their opinion. I know they may not be, they might not all be historical, but there was a reason why they picked some of these. Some of these got picked more than once. So I want to probably, as the mayor said, think about a few, five or 10, and come back, you know, maybe write a few bio for some of the historical ones. I think that they're all, you know, historically, they all make sense to me. I wish we could name them all. But some folks might not have the same feelings that we have to honor, you know, a trail breaker or a trailblazer, you know, that, you know, we all have different experiences, right? My trailblazer might be a scientist, might be someone in a different, you know, environment of the time. So I don't necessarily think that we have to have streets that every other city has that honors the same people, you know, over and over. You know, we can be different. We can be unique. But like I said, I don't want to rush through something like this.
I'm okay with whatever council wants to do. If y'all want to, if y'all want to just give direction on Paula Alvarez, because a couple of people said they wanted that, or if you want to take the list, you know, whittle it down to, you know, put together a list and then create bios and send it out. I think that, you know, I think the public would enjoy that process. But the people who are, you know, if you're talking about living folks, that, like you say, there could be some feelings towards how many votes they get, and it becomes a popularity contest.
Yep. It's definitely going to go down that route. And I'm going to tell you right now, and what's going to happen is, once we get that list, you're going to have certain people calling people to go and vote for this person, vote for this person, vote for this person. You're not going to get that honest feedback that you're looking for, that should this really be who the road's been named after? I mean, look, I've seen it. I mean, I've seen it played out where, I mean, you'll have families calling, all their cousins and everybody else, hey, go vote for this, go vote for this. And that's what's going to end up happening. But if y'all agree with that, I mean, I think we're missing out on a great opportunity to honor someone who was a trailblazer. But if y'all want to do something different, I'm good with that, too.
I don't think that we're passing up on the opportunity.
Yeah, we are.
Well, that's your perspective. We all, we get calls about items all the time. So I'm not really sure why we would rush this. I mean, to go out and do this, this contest, I think is what it was called, with the public, to then take the feedback from the public and to just cast it aside and add in, but you added in a name from the dais, and now you want us to vote on that name. And I'm.
Well, a couple of us did.
Okay, that's fine. Whether it's one or five of us, we still ask the public to weigh in on this. So like, let's just come back at one more meeting. And whether or not we still go with the names that were suggested from up here, that can happen at the next meeting. I just. Councilor McKinney?
In all fairness, Alvarez was on the list. I feel like the shortlist with some bios and getting some community engagement is the appropriate way to go. I mean, I could vote for Alvarez and have a clear conscience from this moment on. But I can't disagree with getting input from the residents.
Do you have any feedback on any of the items, ones that I suggested?
I had two of yours on my list, too.
Which two?
Chevo Senior and Becky.
I think they certainly merit consideration. And it was Becky's district, too. I mean, so she literally represented east and southeast Kyle, where Go Fourth is going through. So I think it would be honoring to her to at least have her be considered, as well as Mr. Pastrano. I mean, he, you know, I've gone through and read through a lot of the minutes. You know, he's a great councilman. He served for 15-plus years. It's a long, long time to sit on the dais and deal with the city issues. So.
Yeah, that's a good one, too.
Yeah. And I will say that there is something to be said about the MLK discussion. It really was number two by a close vote when the panel of 16 met. And there were, when the concession was made that it would go veterans, there was a pretty significant conversation about the next major road would be MLK. So I'm just wanting to honor that group and the work that they did. They met for, they met four, five, six times in order to narrow down, you know, and determine what they wanted to do. So I would like to at least consider that road. But you are correct that it's not historic to the city of Kyle. But it does represent, it is a street that gets named many times in, you know, in many cities. But I think if you put MLK on there, next to historic names that maybe aren't quite so well-known, that might change it, change the calculus there. So I think just my understanding of how human nature is, is that that road would probably get, that suggestion would probably get a lot of votes.
So what if we, the motion was to take the 10 names in green that received multiple votes, and then add to that the names that were recommended from the dais, and that be the final list?
Well, I think Alvarez did not receive multiple votes.
But that was named from the dais.
Okay.
And Fajita got several votes. I'm not, I'm not going to say that there were that many people who were that serious about naming it Fajita. I feel like we're being trolled. There are seven Fajitas in there.
Yeah. And Houston is also the, that's San Marcos. So it's like, yeah, I can understand that. But I don't want to send that out. And I'm not going to consider, you know, Houston as well.
I'm talking about the, I know the public at home can't see this, but in the presentation, the ones at the top, if you just count the ones that have a number next to them, there's 10, and Fajita's not one of them.
It's because they put it in the yellow, even though it's named after, you know, it was a historic figure. And there was a lot more to it than the way that it ended up being received by the community. So, but yes, it did receive a lot of votes. And I was happy to see that.
We already have the signs, too. So that saves you some money.
From a budget standpoint, that would make sense.
Somewhere.
Maybe call it Porter Oak Road. I don't know.
We already have a Porter.
Oh, Porter Oak, okay.
That was the Han Ranch. That's not anything to do with Porter. That was the Han Ranch that was there. People get it right. Know your history, please.
Was there, is there, other than the Alvarez, is there anything in the green section that somebody would want to have sent back out to the, to the public?
No, because like I said, Mayor, there's going to be other streets. There's going to be other roads. And I knew this was coming. So, you know, we just keep moving on. If that's what the motion is on the table, then, you know, we can go with.
What's your, what's your thought on it? I mean, we've had different opinions. But do you want to send it out to the voters on a shortlist? Or would you rather just go with Alvarez? Or something different?
Well, these were, these were the names that were submitted. I'd like to be able to at least get some impact and some feedback. But if we just have the top three, if we go with the top three, then go from there and then, and then see where we're at from the residents. Again, to avoid that confusion about this road. Because like I said, as we continue to grow, we're going to be renaming more streets in the future.
Yeah. Well, I, for one, am all about historic road names, naming, naming roads after historic Kyle figures. I think that we need to celebrate our history, you know. Councilor Zuniga?
I do like the Navarro Road. I know that's not maybe Kyle, but very famous to Hano. So Juan Antonio Navarro found, he assigned the Declaration of Texas Independence to one of the only Tejanos and one of the impresarios that led Austin to Texas. So historical.
Yes. The reason why that one didn't get an asterisk is just because it wasn't Kyle, really, like Anne Richards. I didn't, I didn't asterisk her. And yes, I hear you.
Additional thoughts? Does anybody else want to go with Navarro to send it out? On the other three, we've at least had multiple people, you know, raising those issues, raising those names. All right, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to issue a survey seeking votes, one vote per address, not multiple vote, however that works, for the names Paula Alvarez, Chevo Pastrano Senior, and Becky Selbera, and have in the, in the survey seeking feedback, bios that reference their historic achievements and contributions to the city of Kyle, and then allow that to come back to us.
Just those three names, correct?
Those three names.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by the mayor, second by Councilor Tobias. Is there a discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion. All right, motion carries six to one. Motion, Mr. Heiser? All right, we're here.